...to order. Charlie, can we please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Guerrero. Here. Commissioner Kang.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Vice Chair Barrera.
Here.
And Chair Donaldson has an excused absence this evening, so we have a quorum of five commissioners present.
Okay, before we move on to the next few items on the agenda, I have an announcement item 8.1, which is the study session for the parking management plan has been continued to a later date. For May 17th, it will be a special meeting and held at the regular time of 6:30. This is in order to give staff additional time for analysis and consideration of public comments that they received at recent workshops. And we have a member of staff, Amber Evans, who will be outside in case anybody is here to provide comments on the study session that was scheduled for today. You can go out and talk to Amber, and she can provide you with more information if you'd like as well. So the next item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody can speak on an item that's not on the agenda, and if anybody has any public comments, please approach the microphone now. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the action minutes. We have two, one for the special meeting of March 15th and another for the regular meeting of March 22nd, 2018. Any changes, any comments?
I would move approval of both. Second. Let me just do a check of head count here. So Commissioner Kang was absent from both, so you had abstained from both of those, and Vice Chair Barrera was absent from the March 22nd meeting.
So can we approve that one if there's only three?
Let me see. Probably not. There's only three of you here who, well, three out of five. Does that work?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a core, it's...
Yeah, so majority of those present and voting.
Okay.
Or, well, we're not voting, whatever. Okay, yeah, so is that without objection then, on both of those? All right, and we'll just make note of who is abstaining because they weren't at the meeting. All right.
Okay. And now moving on to disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. Oh, sorry.
Director's report?
Sorry about that, Charlie. Next is director's report.
Right, okay. So first to report to you on what the city council has done since you last met. They've had two meetings, one on April 3rd and one on April 17th. On April 3rd, at a special meeting prior to the regular meeting, the council appointed Chris Owens and Evan Lovett-Harris as community members to serve on the housing committee for terms effective immediately and ending on June 30th, 2019. The council decided to consolidate several upcoming celebrations on Thursday, May 10th. These include Bike to Work Day, dedication of the Emeryville Greenway and Pellidoo Park, also known as Pellidoo Park, and the Pellidoo Park Art Mural Dedication. I don't know if you all have this in front of you, but this is a flyer that I found in front of my space that announces these community events on Thursday, May 10th again. And the murals dedication and park dedication will be at 10:00 AM, and that's on the new segment of the Greenway between Powell and Stanford, right? Next to the honor bar and the broken rack. And then also on April 3rd, following my director's report on actions taken by the planning commission at your last meeting on March 22nd, at council member Martinez's request, the council appealed your approval of the Sprint antennas on the water tower. Council member Martinez indicated that she wanted additional information about it. She was subsequently provided with the staff report for the item, as well as a link to the video of the planning commission meeting, both of which she reviewed. After reviewing those items, she advised that she was satisfied with the commission's decision and wished to drop the appeal. So at the following city council meeting on April 17th, the council formally dismissed the appeal. So the commission's decision on that item is now final. Also on April 17th, the council at a special meeting prior to their regular meeting heard a presentation and held a discussion on their legislative priorities. The mayor, on behalf of the city council, issued a proclamation proclaiming April 22nd, 2018, Sunday, April 22nd, last Sunday, as Earth Day in the city of Emeryville. The council considered the proposed Sherwin-Williams PUD amendment to allow removal of 11 existing street trees on Horton Street to facilitate undergrinding of utilities, which was recommended for approval by you at your last meeting. Mayor Bouders was accused because he owns his home across the street from the project site, and after hearing the staff presentation, taking public testimony, and deliberating on the matter, it was clear that the remaining four council members were divided on the issue. They did not have a majority to either approve it or disapprove it. So ultimately, they voted to continue the item to a future meeting to allow for more details of the undergrinding to be developed. The council adopted, so that will be coming back to the council at a future date after those more details are worked out, and hopefully there will, a resolution will be forthcoming at that time. The council adopted updated development impact fees for fiscal year 2018-19 with an increase of 3.49% over last year. That's based on the annual increase in the engineering news record construction cost index for San Francisco. The fees include the transportation facility impact fee, the park and recreation facility impact fee, and the affordable housing impact fee. And finally, the council adopted timelines for the 12 goals they had previously adopted at their March 6th meeting. In other matters, I just returned this afternoon from the annual national planning conference in New Orleans, and there will be a full report about that in the next Community Development Department progress report. Finally, as you just heard, the study session on parking, on the parking management plan that had been scheduled for tonight has been continued to a special planning commission meeting on May 17th. I believe that five commissioners will be able to make that time, and that will allow more time for further analysis of comments received at the recent community workshops. Yesterday, I emailed you the update that had previously been emailed by the city manager to the city council. Unless you have any questions on that, I won't take up the commission's time reiterating that update, but we will, as I said, have, be having a special commission meeting on May 17th about it. Yes, at 6:30, at the regular time of 6:30. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Does the commission have any questions? No? Okay. We'll move on to disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications.
I had a meeting with the applicant for the cannabis retail dispensary.
All right, thank you. So we will move on to the public hearings. The first one is for tanium signs. It is a consideration of a major sign permit for two high-rise identification signs at 2100 Powell Street, and we will hear a presentation from Navarre.
So in front of you at your dais, you should have received an email, a communication from resident about this item tonight. Also, the applicants are here to answer any questions you may have, as well as address the commission after my presentation. And there are some sign samples in front, here you can see, as well as a light box, so those are also available for your review. So moving forward with the presentation tonight, we are looking at 2100 Powell Street. The background on this is in 2000, the first high-rise sign went up on this building, and 2011, that was for Sebel Signs. And then the original art.com sign was approved in 2011, and some changes were modified to that in 2012 to make the sign from lowercase letters to uppercase letters. And then in 2012, in response to resident complaints, there is approval for amendment to the conditions of approval for that sign to limit sign colors and brightness. In 2017, art.com sign changes were approved by this planning commission to change from the originally approved puck LED lights to standard LEDs, which illuminate the sign behind the sign face. But while those changes were approved, they were never made, and art.com sign was removed. And here we are tonight for a proposal of new signs in this location for tanium. So one sign on the north face, one side on the south face, the same exact locations as the former signs. The signs are red and white and illuminated with internal white LEDs that are dimmable. The sign area is 250 square feet, which is less than the 1% maximum of the building elevation that's permitted, or not permitted, but allowed for consideration for a high-rise sign. So here's a map of the area. You can see there's a little red mark on the 2100 Powell building. Whoops, sorry about that. And here we are. So on your left here, they have, it shows the north and the south locations of the sign, and there's a site plan. And here is an elevation showing the tanium signs. So here we have a dark line towards the bottom here, which is the building parapet wall and exterior of the building. There is a building facade. Behind the facade is where the power supply is for the sign, and it's where the demmer controls are as well. There's a structure that's using the same structure as all the formerly approved signs in this location, but where the tanium sign will go is mounted on that. So here's an image of the tanium sign. The logo for tanium is on top, and the tanium sign all in capital letters below that, so two rows. The letters are six feet tall, and the sign is just over 33 feet wide, so it fits on the little part of the building that sticks out at this place, at this location. And you can see over here to the right, another example of the sign being mounted on a structure that's located behind the parapet wall. The sign illumination is internal, so the sign face is a solid material, and then behind that, there's white LEDs that are diffuse the light through the sign, so the sign will illuminate red, and then where's the, there's the white T for the logo will illuminate both red and white. So here's some renderings. The south rendering is to the left, and the north rendering is to the right. This map shows the visibility area of the sign from the north and the south. And what we're going to do is go through simulations from the south to the north in those view corridors. So here we are. There's a little miniature map of what I just showed you with a little asterix showing where the site, where the photo was taken from, and that will be updated with each slide. So this is the position furthest that we have a rendering for from the south, and a nighttime rendering of that same location. Then this is a little bit closer onto the freeway, and this is from approximately where Pacific Park Plaza is. So this is now on the north-facing sign, and there's a nighttime rendering of that. Then we move north from there. This is closer to 64th Street, and a nighttime rendering of that. And then further up by the freeway exit. And then here we have from Point Emery. So the major design review findings for signs are that the proposed signs are necessary due to nature of the establishment's location. In this case, high-rise signs are identification for building tenants. The proposed signs are no larger than necessary, so it's large enough to be read from the ground while complying with the maximum sign area regulation of 1% of building facade. The proposed sign complies with the planning regulations and design principles. The proposed signs keep with the visual character of the area, high-rise signs in this location on the peninsula. The proposed signs are readable. The proposed signs relate well to the building and architectural features. And the general design review findings are that the design of the project is consistent with the general plan, including urban design goals and policies, that the design conforms to the Emeryville design guidelines, and that the project is of a high design quality that is compatible with and will not adversely affect the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of the tanium high-rise identification signs, subject to the conditions of approval, of course. And as I said, the applicant is available for questions, as I am I, and they would also like to address the commission.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Navarre, thank you for the presentation, Navarre. Just a few things about the sign illumination. Are there specific regulations as to when the sign has to be dimmed or turned off, specific hours in the day or night?
That's not included in the conditions of approval at this time.
Gotcha.
But it, there is, I'm sorry, there is the general condition that the sign needs to be dimmed to the satisfaction of the director.
Okay. Gotcha. Was there, dropping memory, Navarre, was there specific hours in which that was imposed on the art.com sign?
Not originally. After the situation with LED pucks and that technology, it was imposed.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think I was, I wanted to just get a clarification because the memo we got from Lori was asking very specifically about when the sign might be turned off. Do you know if there will be a time when the sign is turned off?
It's not specified in the conditions at this point, but the applicant could, I think, better answer what their intentions were for the elimination of the sign.
Can we have the applicant come answer the question?
I still have a question.
Okay, sorry.
Navarre, I just wanted, the reason this is before us, and my understanding is twofold, is number one, it has a logo, and number two, it's a colored sign. It's not a white sign. Is that correct?
I think you're referring to the fact that there is a master sign program for the towers out there. This building is not under that master sign program.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So, yeah, so I'm glad you clarified that point.
Yeah.
All of the other high-rise buildings on the peninsula do have a master sign program, and if the sign were on those buildings, yes, those would be the restrictions and reasons why it was coming before you. However, this building does not have those restrictions, so it falls to the sign ordinance for the city.
Okay. And then if we wanted to impose a time that the sign is turned off, we could add that to the conditions?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll talk about that later. Thank you.
Okay, can we have the applicant come answer Commissioner Thompson's question, please? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joey Martinez. I'm with Tanium. I'm the head of facilities in real estate. To answer your question as simply as possible, we're going to reuse the same timer astronomical clock that was used for art.com, basically turning it off during daytime hours, turning it on at nighttime hours. We don't really see a purpose in leaving the light on during the daytime, so we're fine with that, even on cloudy, dark days, so.
Does the timer that you use go based on the lighting of the, you mean, when the sun goes down?
No, it's based on the time of day.
Oh, okay.
It's not based on any kind of sensors reading the light or anything like that.
All right, are there any other questions?
So Mr. Martinez, is there, is there going to be, do you plan to have someone adjusting based on just when, for example, when daylight savings hour takes place to be adjusted, put just a back an hour, whatever it needs to happen?
Yes, yeah, we'll have staff, and part of the reason why I wanted to address the commission is to introduce myself. We run a pretty small group with Tanium. We're a pretty fast-growing startup, but right now, my department is very small, so I'm actually in charge of this entire scope regarding signage, and will be the one responsible for making those changes and those controls. So with daylight savings time, yes, we'll make those adjustments, and as things come up to the city of Emeryville, if Director Bryant is receiving issues, I'll be the point of contact and can make those adjustments. We're very flexible, and, you know, we want this to be a partnership with the city, so very flexible on that.
I'm glad to hear that, Mr. Martinez. In terms of the adjustments being made, do you think it'll be largely automated, or do you have someone to do it manually when it needs to be, like, jumped back like an hour or forward an hour?
When it needs to be jumped back, I intend on doing it manually.
Okay.
Just to make sure it's done right, so.
Gotcha, thank you.
No more questions?
Just one, again, it's a clarification question. Would you typically adjust them four times a year? How does that happen?
Well, typically, whenever we'll have those, the actual daylight savings time is when we'll go adjust it. So, yeah, multiple times a year.
Right, and I just, the reason I wondered is because obviously, days get longer and then shorter.
Yeah, exactly, and I think the way that we'll manage that moving forward is that as the days are getting longer, we'll make those adjustments, along with, you know, when the sunrise sunset is.
Okay, yeah, no, and I think just to give us a typical schedule would help, just because I know you're not going to be out there every day.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. It's two minutes later.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Actually, do you know what time the timers are set to start currently? Because you said you were going to use the existing timers, right?
Right. I'm not sure what they're set at currently. I know art.com didn't seem like they were using the illumination piece, and now that the sign's down, it will basically be programming it new.
Okay.
I think right now, the sun sets sometime around like 7:45 to 8:00, so we'd set it to that timeframe.
And what time are you in, having in mind of turning it off?
I mean, typically, my intent would be to turn it off at like 6:00 or 7:00 AM.
Okay.
But again, same concept, we'll want to stick with when the sunrise sunset kind of substantially changes.
All right, if there are no more questions, I will open up the public hearing for comments. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please feel free to approach the podium.
Chair, did the applicant want to make a presentation? I thought Navarre said you did.
Yes, go ahead.
So I just had a couple of things, because tanium's not a household name. I wanted to kind of introduce tanium to the city, the commission, everybody watching. So just a little background, we are in the cybersecurity realm of things. We were recently deemed one of the unicorns in this market, so very, very rapid growth. Our CEO is East Bay native, loves it here, doesn't want to leave. Him and his father started a company prior to tanium called Big Fix that is located here in Emeryville as well. Since then, they sold it off to IBM, but they want to maintain the presence in the East Bay, in the city of Emeryville. We've recently signed a 10-year lease at 2100 Powell because we're here to stay. Part of why I'm here is to continue building a relationship with the city and keep that growth continued. As far as, you know, right now, we're working out a 2200 Powell. In mid-July, we plan on relocating to 2100 Powell, so that's a big move for us. We'll take three full floors there, and we just continue to grow at that, at about a 30% rate every year, so very quickly, and we have a very strong customer base from the likes of the armed forces, a lot of the top 10 banks, Bank of America, JP Morgan, as well as a lot of the top retailers around. California Department of Justice is well as one. So we're building a big base. We like it here, we want to stay. Our leadership is, they're natives here, so I just wanted that communicated. And then for me personally, again, I run everything in the facilities and real estate realm, top to bottom, from making sure that, you know, the janitorial guys are working, and then making sure we're signing lease deals globally. So a small crew, but that just means we pay more attention. We have 24/7 security as well, so I plan on training them on some of these controls and how to make quick adjustments, and bare minimum, turn it off when it's needed to be turned off if something breaks. I'd rather them just shut it off, so that's not, you know, one letter out for 24 hours till we get it fixed. And there's a lot of procedures that we're putting in place to make sure that everybody's happy, and that the residents in Emeryville are satisfied and happy we're here, so.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, so I'll open it up for public comments, so if anybody wishes to speak, please approach Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I see some new faces here since the last time I spoke before you. My name is Paul Gerhart, and I'm a resident at Pacific Park Plaza since 1989. We are the high-rise condo with over 500 units, which about one-third of our units look west at 2001 Powell Street, where this new sign is proposed. The first time I came to the planning commission was in June of 2012 regarding the art.com sign. That sign was a real shock and to everyone, and really caused an uproar and a battle for several years. Most people thought it was a giant eyesore, and at one point, we had four or five lawyers involved in trying to settle this. After several painful years, we finally resolved the issues with the art.com sign. Last time I came before the commission, I believe it was around October of last year, when art.com proposed a new sign, which was actually quite acceptable to everyone, including all the residents at Pacific Park Plaza. So what happened? The approved sign never went up on the building. So now here we are. We have a new sign from a new company proposed that is, again, bright red LEDs. This takes us back to 2012 again. With all due respect, this new sign, from what I've seen, is horrible, and it looks like light pollution all over again, back from 2012. This new sign will be shining into our bedroom all night again. I don't know what to do tonight at this meeting, except to ask for your help. We cannot repeat the same mistakes that we made six years ago. Please do not approve the sign tonight until we can see if there are other alternatives or sign modifications that can be made. Again, this sign is an eyesore, and let's not make the same mistake all over again that will allow this new sign to go up. We, the residents at Pacific Park Plaza, really, really need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment and open it up for deliberation to, for the commissioners. Would anybody like to start?
Okay, so in terms of the new signage that's being proposed, I am curious about the lumens that are, in this sign compared to the art.com sign, and what the difference is. I, I support having local business here in our, in our city, and so would like to see this request be fulfilled if it doesn't light up the building or the neighborhood more than the neighbors would want. So I hear the neighbors loud and clear. I also live close by, and I'm also affected by the lights, so I understand that. But the signage itself, I think, is an improvement from having nothing up there. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would echo the same thing. The way I see this is art.com sign ended up being a white sign, which is pretty bright, and I think a red sign is going to be toned down, not as much. A blue sign is almost impossible to see, but I think a red sign, in terms of intensity of light, is going to be less, but it would be nice to know what we're looking at in the difference of lumens from the art.com sign at its last rendition to what this sign is producing, so we can make a little bit more informed decision of, is it, the way I see it, it's actually going to be less bright than what was there before, and so that in, means it wouldn't be a problem, but we don't know that as fact, so it would be nice to have that information if it's available.
Navarre, do you have an answer for that?
So I can't speak directly off the top of my head to the lumens comparison. However, the applicant, Tom Salmon for Arrow Sign Company, does, he can address, I think, your questions, and he also did bring a light box to demonstrate, so if you'd like him to demonstrate that, that might help address some of your questions and concerns.
Sure, I think that would be a good idea.
Tom, would you like to come up?
Sure.
And I can, if you decide you'd like to see the, the dimming capabilities, I can also turn off the lights to help you see the contrast if you like.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Tom Salmon, Arrow Sign Company. Tom Salmon, Arrow Sign Company. I have a light box and a sample board we can go through. In terms of the lumen output, it, I would need to have or understand what the art.com sign was in terms of its output in order to give you an appropriate comparison, and I can research that and figure that out. I think I have the old drawings from art.com, so I can quantify that for you. So first and foremost, I'll just pull this up. So here we have our light box. Let me just turn this on.
Yeah, thank you. You have to speak into the mic so that the people at home can hear you. Thank you.
So this is our light box. It will be controlled via a demmer that's going to be mounted, as per the drawings, inside of that penthouse, that mechanical penthouse, but for demonstration purposes, I wanted to indicate general idea, right? So this is the tanium red, right? And inside this box, you'll see that we have a series of LEDs that illuminate this red face, right? And then we have this dimmer control down at the bottom. Allows us to control the light. Allows us to control the light intensity.
How bright are you intending to have that dimmer when it's up on the building?
So I think the best way to answer that is, when we did the Berkeley research, the BRG sign years ago, what happened was Navar came out after the sign was done, and we were in the building able to control the light output to find that right temperature, that light temperature.
Understood. Can you please turn the light box around so that the members of the public can see it as well?
Does everybody see that okay? So that there is full brightness.
Navar, would you mind turning the lights off so that we can take a look at how that looks?
Then how about showing what about half brightness would be?
Can you turn it around so that we can see what it looks like in the dark, please? Thank you.
There's a banner white over here.
Okay. So that's at about half brightness, you said?
Correct.
Can you turn it up?
Sure.
So we can see the full brightness? All right, excellent. Thank you.
Should I turn it off now?
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Navar. Okay, do we have any other comments on this side?
Vice Chair Barrera?
Yes.
Perhaps I can provide a little information about the art.com sign.
Okay, that'd be great.
I believe some measurements at some point were taken by a lighting expert, but we learned through that experience, which was lengthy, that measuring sign brightness is complicated, difficult, there's different ways to measure it. Certain kinds of measurements are, require you to be right at the face of the sign to measure it, which obviously you can't do, so most people can't do. So you take it from a distance, and, you know, it varies with the distance. It's a little bit like noise, where it's problematic to get accurate readings. Ultimately, the conditions of approval for the art.com sign after they were modified by the commission had a condition that said that the nighttime brightness, this was for the north-facing sign, was to be no more than the nighttime brightness exhibited by the north-facing sign on October 25, 2012. That's basically all it said. This condition was written by a bunch of lawyers. And, you know, I mean, all due respect to lawyers. How do you determine that? You know, who remembers what it was on October 25, 2012? I think the, and I'm not, I don't recall how many of you were on the commission when we had our study session last year. I think most of you were when we had the study session about signs, right? And the consensus of the commission, after going through lots of examples, was that we probably shouldn't try to regulate sign brightness numerically, because it's just too complicated. So I wouldn't want to send this poor man to go out and spin his wheels and do a bunch of analysis to come up with a bunch of numbers that probably won't mean anything to us anyway. But the big difference between the art.com sign and this sign is the art.com sign did not have a condition of approval requiring it to be dimmed if the community development director determined it was too bright. And hence, we ended up in a bunch of protracted revocation hearings. It's, this, our proposed condition that it shall be dimmed to my satisfaction if it's determined to be too bright will address that. So the people at Pacific Park Plaza, if they think it's too bright, they can call me, and we won't have to have a special commission meeting, and then we can just adjust the sign until it's not too bright anymore. So hopefully, that will address this concern.
Great. Thank you very much.
And can you also confirm, though, that the art.com sign was white, not red?
That's another complicated thing. Well, there was the north sign and the south sign. It was, the north sign was the only one that was at issue, because that was the one that was visible from Pacific Park Plaza. The conditions of approval ultimately, as they were finally resolved after this process, had, I think it was four specific colors that the north sign was allowed to be, and they were very specifically spelled out in terms of their red, green, blue composition. And those were basically chosen by the Pacific Park Plaza folks after looking at lots of different examples. I don't remember exactly what those four colors were. None of them were red, though, I don't think. Do you recall, Navar, what they were?
I'm sure Paul knows what the colors are.
They weren't white either.
They, no, they weren't. And, I mean, I do have some context I could provide to you about other high-rise signs in the city, but it's not to specifically the question you have right now.
Now, the sign, the sign originally was multi-color. It could be any color, because it was made up of a bunch of LED pucks that could be, you know, to change, the colors were kind of infinitely variable.
Yeah, no, I mean, the question was really related to the fact of brightness and color, you know, that they both affect the visual quality of it. And I just wasn't sure if there was a sense of the color in isolation where that, what the opportunity is with color. Because I think, I think we all agree that the dimmer opportunity to calibrate is an advantage, so, like that.
Also, the art.com sign was basically unshielded LED bulbs.
Right.
They weren't diffused through any kind of, you know, plastic face or anything. And they were, I don't know how many of you actually witnessed them, but it was blinding. It was really bright. This won't be anywhere near that bright, I hope.
And one perspective I could give to the commission is, I live across on the other side of the building and look at the public market side. And the public market has white letters that say Emory Bay Public Market, and in the middle of that is a Guitar Center sign with a guitar pick that is red. The white is much more intense and lights up our bedroom more than that red diffuse like this, so. And looking at this, when you had it up at full intensity, sitting right in front of it, I'm going, okay, that's not terribly bright. And when you put it hundreds of feet in the air and hundreds of feet away, it's going to really diffuse. And the one benefit we have is, we dim it if it's too bright. And we dim it down until it reaches where, you know, it's comfortable.
Mr. Martinez, may I ask you a question? Thank you, Mr. Salmon. Appreciate it. Before, prior to presenting here tonight, did you have any outreach to the residents, particularly in Pacific Park Plaza, to meet with the residents there, ask the HOA, or give some kind of demonstration or anything?
No, I have not. I know that Navar had done some communication, which is typical for these. I did have a couple of conversations with their property manager, just generally talking about what's going on, and part of that was trying to get photos for the renderings as well. But beyond that, no.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. Madam Chair, is this an opportunity for a commissioner to give comments as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I think Charlie gives a great summary and very diplomatic description of our city's history with signage and illumination. And Charlie described kind of our history with the art.com sign as being lengthy. Very diplomatic of you, Charlie. I would give different words to it, as well as lengthy, is that history that we have has been often painful and persistent. And I think that a lot of that had to deal with just, a lot of science being, when it's implemented, it doesn't quite translate, or there's many interpretations based on where you're seeing it from and your perspective, time of day, time of year. And I think it would be well within the applicant's business model, as with their community relations, if they actually went back to the residents just to meet with them, give them more detailed demonstration, understanding of what you're trying to implement prior to trying to gain this commission's approval. Because I think in this issue, an ounce of prevention may be worth 10,000 pounds of cure, based on our history. The residents around that area, especially in Pacific Park Plaza, they are vocal and they are battle-tested. So when they see variations and deviations from what you promised this evening, which I, I want to assume best intentions, that you will be vigilant, when there are the slightest deviations, they will let you know, they will let us know, they will let Charlie know, and they will, Navar, no. And that's all great, because this is what we're here for, but that results in this huge time suck, misunderstandings, and misinterpretations. And that's something I would like to implore this body to say, why don't we just, we don't have to approve it tonight. We can slow the roll, make sure the community's involved, make sure the community is satisfied. And maybe they could come to terms and talk about what it might be. And there may not be a reconciliation or 100% agreement, however, there's at least a demonstration, so there's a show of good faith. So I just want to let my federal commissioners know that prior to a meeting happening with the residents, especially at Pacific Park Plaza, you will not have my vote for approval tonight. But I do really lodge you for coming to Emeryville, growing your business in Emeryville. I want to approve this sign eventually, but I think it's a bit premature, it's missing a few steps, absent a meeting with the community. So I'd like to encourage that. Thank you.
Are there any more comments from Commissioner Thompson? Do you have any other comments? Would you like to wait?
That direction.
Commissioner Keller?
I totally hear what Commissioner Kang is saying, and I understand that. I'm concerned, I talked to a lot of small businesses opening, matter of fact, I just had a conversation with one at Public Market the other night, or last night. And the biggest complaint they have is the cost of dealing with the city and the protracted time it takes to get anything done. I think by the show of only one person for PPP being here tonight and one letter, and those are the two people that usually speak on the subject, I respect and understand the fact of bringing the meeting, but I know at our homeowners' meetings, how many people show up or don't show up. And I really value companies coming to our city, especially companies with high profiles as this company does, and the commitment they're putting to our community. I think with the controls and regulations that we now have, the problems we had before with the art.com are addressed. Looking at the renderings of this sign, I don't see that there is going to be a problem. And if there is a problem, we have ways to work with that. But I think keeping, sending companies back, try again, do this over, start again, bring it back. You know, we only meet once a month, so we're delaying their process a month. And I don't really see that there's going to be the payoff that we're looking for by doing that. So I think with the controls that we have and the conditions of approval, I'm ready to approve this tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Guerrero, do you have any other comments?
I don't.
Okay. I will give my comments. So I actually agree with Commissioner Keller. You know, it, before we have these planning commission meetings, there is a lot of work that goes into preparing for them from both staff and the applicants. You know, it's time and energy and, you know, ultimately, money that it costs everybody to prepare and come to these meetings. And these are also forums for the public to come and address their issues and have people submit their comments. And I agree that we have, you know, the conditions of the dimmer in place to address the comments that we received. And I would like to put it on the record that it sounds like the signs will not be illuminated during the day, because that was one of the concerns that we received in the email that Navar had put on our dais. And Charlie has made it very clear that if there are any concerns with, you know, the brightness, or if the sign's getting turned on too early, or turned off, you know, too early, or what have you, Charlie is available to take your comments and, you know, work with the applicant to address those issues. So I also appreciate local, you know, this local business is enthusiastic about being in Emeryville. You know, we appreciate that very much. So with that said, I would also, would like to second the motion, if that was the motion, Commissioner Keller. Was it or not?
I was not sure everyone had a chance to communicate. I don't know.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit, not too much, but I think, I think I too had some of the same concerns about community outreach in terms of having a very clear sort of typical operation strategy. But I would say that this does seem distinctive, a distinctive condition from the art.com situation. Now, I was not involved in all of the protracted discussions, so I will just say that. But I do think the dimmer is a really positive move. The authority that the planning commissioner has, the planning director has over that is very positive. It allows a level of control that wasn't there before. I do think that businesses coming before us, that's a great thing to have. I think in terms of it being very clear that it's not on during the day, that, those are good things, too. So I think at this time, I'm feeling that this is a good presentation. It's not the perfect presentation, though, in terms of being able to have everything worked out. So I just wanted to note that those are key things on the record and that there, I think it is a vast improvement from certainly what happened before.
So Chair, if I could just mention one thing. With hearing that, maybe what we can do, because signs are such a sensitive issue here, and they're always, this isn't too contentious as they have been, but maybe what we could do is direct staff in the future that when these signs come up or things, that maybe you suggest that they do the community outreach before we get too far along in the program. That it seems like the commission feels it's kind of a important element that maybe they're just not aware of, that if they come into a city that they've never been into, they don't know we have this hot-button issue. So maybe our staff could kind of tell them, you know, here's your application, maybe you want to have a community outreach meeting. I see the attorney's not liking this suggestion.
So I understand the point behind community outreach, but we do have codified notification procedures that have been followed in this case. And so while we can make suggestions to the applicant, it's not, it's not required.
Right. That's what I'm just saying, just, let's just make the suggestion, they could take the ball and run with it or not. But if they, if they're aware that, hey, you know, this is a hot-button issue for the city, maybe I need to do that extra thing to make sure this gets through the commission without these kind of problems. So that's just the suggestion I'm making. Certainly not a condition I'm making.
That's a great suggestion, Commissioner Keller. I think Tanium would be wise to hear what you're saying. Even with the approval tonight, I think it might be worth a while just to establish who your neighbors are.
Yeah. I also think it's a good suggestion, and I do want to just note that Navar did reach out to the Park Plaza community, right, Navar? You told me that, or you mentioned that you had some communication with them?
I didn't like directly contact the HOA or anything like that. We did, so as you know, notification is required for 300 feet. Pacific Park Plaza is outside of 300 feet. Pacific Park Plaza was noticed as part of the notification. Anything related to signs that at 2100 Powell gets noticed at Pacific Park Plaza. And that was true when we had even some illuminated ground signs a couple of years ago there. So I was then contacted by two individuals, to which I provided the links and additional information. We had conversations about that. And I didn't receive any other communications. So that's, that's everything that was done there. So that would be typical sort of outreach for this type of application.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
So you're looking to me for a motion?
Not necessarily, but if anybody else would be interested.
I would go ahead and make the motion that we approve.
I'll second that motion.
All right, you ready to vote?
Yes.
So this is as presented with no modifications. Okay?
Correct.
Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Commissioner Kang?
No.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Barrera?
Aye.
Four ayes, one no, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Okay, thank you. And next, we will move on to our next item, which is the AT&amp;T Small Cell Site Facility, which is a consideration of a major conditional use permit and design review permit for a proposed small cell wireless facility on an existing street light pole located at the public right-of-way adjacent to 1411 Powell Street. We'll hear a presentation from Maru.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This is a item for consideration for approval. At the last month's commission meeting, we had a steady session on this, and it's basically to locate a small cell wireless telecommunication facility on an existing street pole on Powell Street. This will be one of, first of the seven such facilities that will be proposed in our town. And the purpose is to provide third and fourth generation wireless service and data coverage and capacity to the surrounding area. So like I mentioned, the commission looked at this last month. At that time, the applicant had proposed three alternatives. One was a slimmer antenna. One was a slimmer antenna without the shroud, one was painting the antenna shroud and radio units with yellow to match public art, and the third one was placement of radio units behind the sign and with antenna in a shroud. The commission generally agreed that the small cell antenna should be unobtrusive, and they preferred, the preference was for the third alternative. So this is to show the gap in coverage, these are the existing conditions, and the black dots are the seven, the five proposed cell sites that are going to be coming, and the one that is encircled is the one that we are talking about today. So what you see in red and white is the kind of coverage that there is. So with the, with the cell site, that hole becomes green, which is the best possible condition for cell sites. So here's the location, is a streetlight on near Harless and Powell, and this is the existing elevation, this is the existing sign, and what they're proposing is adding this antenna shroud, and they will be putting some of the units behind the sign, but there will still be some signs on the pole itself. Both the shroud and the equipment will be painted to match the streetlight. And these are the photo simulations, this is the existing, and this little crop is sort of the close-up of the existing conditions, and this is what it will look like once the installation occurs. So in order to approve this proposal, there are certain standards in a planning regulation that pertain to the cellular facilities in the public right-of-way. One is that it does not interfere with any existing or future facilities, so this was reviewed by our public works staff, and they signed off on it. The second is that they should underground everything that can be undergrounded, and obviously the antenna and the radio units need to be above ground, and the rest of the facilities will be undergrounded. And to minimize overhead facilities, no overhead facilities are being proposed at this point. So in terms of conditional use permit findings, one is the consistency with the general plan, a couple of goals and policies pertaining to adequate public facilities come to mind. The proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area, and the proposed use will provide additional wireless service for the neighborhood. An RF report showing compliance with the EMEC measurements indicates that the facility will have no adverse impact, and that the proposed use is compatible with infrastructure capabilities, and the facility will only be using electric service that will be provided by PG&E. And the last one is that the use will provide a service or a facility, and as I mentioned before, the proposal will provide additional coverage. And that the proposed use is compliant with the applicable standards, and that it is, as I indicated in the standards, that it needs to meet. It all, this project also needs a design review, so again, consistency with the general plan, conformity with the design guidelines, which guideline eight dash eight suggests to underground utility boxes, transformers lines where possible, or locate those outside pedestrian path, this is in compliance, and that it be of high-quality design, there's not too much one can do about this, except that to make it as unobtrusive, you know, unobtrusive as possible. I would like to draw your attention to a few conditions of approval, which are specific to small cell antennas. One is the validation of proper operation, they will be required to provide verification that the radio frequency levels comply with the FCC regulations within 45 days of commencement of operation. There will be a review following one year, so they are to submit a report that shows that the measurement of radio frequency after one year, and after that, they would need to submit if requested by the city. And there's one related to discontinuance of use, the applicant will need to post a cash or a surety bond to cover removal costs of the facility in the event that its use is abandoned or the approval is otherwise terminated. So that concludes my presentation, staff is recommending approval, subject to conditions of approval attached in the staff report. The applicant does have a presentation, so either you can ask me questions now or later, to whatever is your wish.
Does anybody have any questions for Maru?
Quickly, Maru, the posting of the cash or surety bond, do you know how much we're requiring AT&amp;T to put up?
Uh, whatever to cover the removal of costs. So they, it will be reviewed by our public works staff to see how much, approximately how much it would be, but at this time, I don't have a number for you.
Gotcha. And do you know who would, for your first condition, who would actually verify that? Is it the FCC coming to verify it? Who does that?
That is my understanding, so they will provide us with some notification from FCC certifying that this facility is in compliance with the FCC's regulations.
Okay. But you're not certain as to who actually is the one doing the verifying? AT&amp;T will provide certification, but we don't know who's verifying?
FCC would be verifying, right?
I don't know, that's why I asked you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for Maru? Okay, let's have the applicant give their presentation.
All right, thank you, Maru, for the presentation, and good evening, chair members of the commission and staff. My name is Justin Gerita, I'm here representing Vanculum Services. Vanculum Services is a telecommunications developer, and for this project, we're working on behalf of AT&amp;T. We know that you've written many of these applications in the past, so we do appreciate and welcome your analysis and questions. These facilities are very important to the general public, as pretty much everyone nowadays uses a cellular device, whether it's for work-related activity, it's for leisure, or in a state of an emergency, people are connected each and every day with their cell phones. Okay, so just a little bit of a recap, if, and for everyone new here, why small cells? What are small cells? They're flexible network solutions that can be readily deployed at various locations, they're installed in about a day, so they're quickly up and running. They're typically installed in areas where customers are prone to experience any sort of connectivity issue, in heavily populated areas that need network connect, or that need network coverage and capacity, and in certain areas that can't be effectively served by the typical macro or tower site that would be on top of a roof or on top of a mountain. So I wanted to dive into the role that small cells play in all of this. I know two words you just heard me use were coverage and capacity, and those are really important based on what we're trying to do. When a customer determines that they have zero bars on their phone, that's a macro issue, that's the bigger circle, it means there's not enough signal emitting. When a customer looks at their phone, they have three or four bars, and they can't adequately make a call, or they are lagging, that's a capacity issue, and that's where the small cells are going to come in to play a giant role to improve on this. So there's several key differences, both fundamentally and structurally, from the cell towers and the small cells. Cell towers are large, they are very, very big, they support a lot of equipment, they're typically found, like I said, on rooftops, they're found on top of hills, whereas a small cell typically takes up 1% of that volume, so they're tiny, and they still support equipment. And they're placed in the public right-of-way in utility poles, and the state law does allow that to occur. The wattage for a small cell, about 10 watts, it's not, not that large, and it serves about a third of a mile, so there is much smaller, as referenced in the last slide with the smaller circles, whereas the coverage area with a large cell tower, it could be several miles. So there's many opportunities for it to miss several cell phones where they're not getting full service. The several, the network configuration, when it comes to the cell towers, they're big sites, they're independent, the small cells will be deployed to work as a part of it, they're going to be a part of the connected network. So I know Maru touched base on these maps, I, I'm going to reiterate it because it is really important. So these are propagation maps that we presented to the city of Emeryville, and this is what, you know, this is what the city looks like without small cells, and our, let's see if this mouse, yeah. These are, these are nodes where we want to install, and they're all very much surrounded by areas of poor data rates or no service. So the small cells will hopefully help that out in terms of the green here, and the area is just in about a third of a mile around, they're now green, so that is something in maintaining the goal of AT&amp;T. There are still many sites, you know, that are of poor rate, but this will hopefully be encouraging sign that small cells working here. So this is our current proposal, this is with the RRU hidden behind the sign, as mentioned at the study session, I know that that was one of the more favorable options, and this is a view looking west on Powell Street towards the bay, and employment of the antenna would be in the public right-of-way up at the top, and would allow companies like, or utility providers like AT&amp;T to come in without interfering with private property. So it's up top here, let's see, right here, it shows a canister-style antenna, the shroud on top of the pole, the antenna is 10 inches in diameter, so it's pretty, pretty small and with the shroud, within the shroud will be a hockey-sized, hockey puck-sized smart meter that allows the city to tap, or that allows us to tap into the city's power. Down here, there are two 18-inch-long RRU units, they're about eight inches in width, which is about the size of the pole in general, and then in between them, there's a 3.5 by 5-inch power disconnect switch that could be accessible for PG&E to turn on and off the power. The antenna would zap, the antenna would tap into the city's electrical circuit that is being used by the light pole. And then these, these images just show it from an easterly perspective, and I wanted to focus in really on the sign here. This is a simulation showing the RRU unit behind the speed check by radar sign, you can't even see it, and this other one right here, it is blended in because of the paint. So all the equipment would be painted to match the pole. So I'm not going to touch too much base on this, we did recommend, or we did, not recommend, we did come up with two other design alternatives. One would be painting a naked reflective antenna, and the other would be a proposed art wrap, and we evaluated these and determined that they would be pretty intrusive, and Powell Street's very busy, and we don't want to cause a distraction to drivers looking up, trying to determine what the art is or what the reflection is. And we did evaluate several other sites, our primary site is right here in Node 19A, and the proposed candidate is at least intrusive, and best needs AT&amp;T's demands for capacity and coverage. All right, I welcome your questions and analysis, thank you.
I'll start on this side, any questions?
Yeah, just a question, do you have an idea of when you guys would plan to do the installation work, time of day or something like that?
I, that hasn't been submitted yet, so.
And do you ever do off-hours, late nights, or anything like that?
Typically would be within whatever the, whatever the allotment is for the city.
Okay, the point I'm getting to, and what I'd like to, is looking, if you can go back to your current, the photo says current proposal where it shows, that one, you go right back to that, that one will work.
This one?
That one.
Okay.
So you could see there, the street light is close to the curve at Palladue and Powell Street, I'm concerned with your cherry picker or your high-reach being on Powell Street and having to divert traffic around it. So what I'd like to see you guys do is one of two things, either put the truck with the high-reach on Palladue, if it can reach the work site from that area, or if you have to park the vehicle on Powell Street to do the work that you do at off-hours, after 6:00 PM before 6:00 AM? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
That will require approval of the City Council, because construction noise is limited to 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay, well, hopefully then maybe you could work from the Palladue side.
Yeah, we could, we could take a look and then.
Yeah, it looks fairly close, but it's kind of hard to tell from these photographs.
It is right on the corner.
Yeah, if you could, you know, if you could park your truck in an area that then the high-reach can get over and do the work, that would be.
Ideal.
Preferred to me, yeah. Because you're coming right off the bridge and all of a sudden you have a truck there, you know, so we're going to have traffic stacking up, and, so that's my comment.
Oh, sure, thank you.
Yeah, can we go back to the image of the cell reception with the, the different shades of color?
Would you like the before or after?
After, please.
Sure. There we go.
Okay, so, and this is data coverage for AT&amp;T, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm so curious, when looking at our city, there's so many patches here, what are, what are our neighbors doing so that they can receive service with all the screen here? Are there a series of these type of cells in our neighbor's city?
I, I know that Oakland is using small cell, I can't really speak to what they're doing as I have not personally been involved, our company has not been called to be involved, but they are exploring small cell technology to be incorporated all throughout. I know that there have been several applications on their planning commission site that they've been hearing with reference to small cell.
Is there a large cell somewhere in the southern part of this image that, that you're aware of?
No.
No?
Not that I'm aware of, not, not with this propagation map.
Okay.
Can you talk about the macro sites?
Yeah, you have a couple of macro.
Yeah, there's a couple of macro sites.
I see the macro sites, but I also, I just see so much patch, patch of no cellular service in our city, so I'm curious why, why that's happening.
I can't, I can't speak to that.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
I, this is, since you have the map up. I was going to jump in here, mostly because your key doesn't include gray, is that no service?
Gray, gray would be no service.
I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Sure.
Is there an estimate of how long it would take to install these seven sites?
Well, they, I can't speak on behalf of the other sites, for this one, it can be installed in as quickly as a day. So it, just as soon as we get everything approved, we can create a plan of execution to get it installed. They're very quick up and running.
This is a question for staff, if the applicant does need to use the public right-of-way or, you know, on Powell Street to do the installation, does the public works department review that under the encroachment permit?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
They need an encroachment permit anyway because they are doing work on the public right-of-way to begin with.
Oh, okay.
So that encroachment permit would cover installation as well.
Got it, thank you. Hey, are there any other questions? No? Okay, seeing no other questions, I will open this public hearing up for comments from anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item, so please feel free to approach the microphone. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing for comments and open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Thompson, would you like to start us off?
Sure. I think in general, I appreciate the applicant's attention to showing multiple options and letting the commission consider those. The, you know, I don't think I question the need for these given the current trends, but I appreciate that you're sort of thinking sensitively about how to insert that utilizing existing infrastructure. And so I think, I did also just want to make sure the seven that you have indicated, and this is the first of seven, I wanted to clarify that, okay. And so I, you know, I think the, the conversation about installation and being equally sensitive about installation, as you have been about the look, is an important comment, but I know it's also part of the process. So overall, I would say that, you know, this is a, this is a needed, needed element in our community, and, and I appreciate the way, the care that you've taken so far in terms of it fitting in.
Commissioner Kang?
You.
Okay. Commissioner Guerrero, would you like to?
Okay, so one of the first things I noticed when I moved here to Emeryville was the lack of service. I actually had to call AT&amp;T to receive a mobile booster for inside of my home. And so I see a huge need for increasing service capacity in our city, especially as we start to, our population begins to grow, and so I'm in full support of this proposal for the first site, and see this as a necessity for communicating in today's world.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, I appreciate the attention to detail that you did come up with options for us to look at, and I think we've chosen the best, I really just would like to make these things disappear as much as possible. I have seen some of them in Oakland, I don't know that there were AT&amp;Ts, but I'd actually sent them to the planning director, the photographs I took prior to our first study session, and they're very unattractive. And so I think, and it's on a light pole, and it's right on Piedmont Avenue, and it's like, wow, that's really unattractive. So I think we're doing a much better job here in getting those installed, so seeing that we're going to need a lot more of these, that I think we're heading down the right road, so this is really good.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I would also like to thank you for coming back with the improved, um, design, if we can call it a design. Um, I think the shroud does make it look like an extension of the pole, so it may be not too noticeable for people who aren't aware that these are going up. Um, so I appreciate that and, and, um, yeah, I mean, you know, from this map, it does seem like there's a pretty big need for it. So, um, I appreciate your application. Okay. Um, with that...
Mayor Sharon, may I make a motion to approve?
Sure thing.
Second.
Okay.
All right, on the motion, um, Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Commissioner Kang?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barrera?
Aye.
Five ayes. The application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Thank you. So we will be moving on to our next item, which is the East Bay Therapeutics Cannabis Retail Dispensary. It's a consideration of a major conditional use permit to allow cannabis sales use at 5745 Pelladue Street, including retail sales of cannabis products and onsite pickup and home delivery. We'll hear a presentation from Maru.
Good evening. So this is our second and the last dispensary application in front of you. Uh, we are back in the Pelladue region again today. It seems like it's a Pelladue kind of a day. Uh, so the location of the second dispensary will be on Pelladue across the Broken Rack, and you know, the honor bar is right here. And to kind of recap, uh, an RFP process was instituted by the city council in September of last year, and East Bay Therapeutics was one of the two applicants that was selected. As part of their application, EBT has indicated that it would provide several community benefits, uh, which include, uh, a city walk program, which would entail improvements, uh, on Powell Street Bridgewater Bay by providing lights, permanent artwork on the pillars there, and assignment of full-time security patrols. It will also donate 1% of its gross revenue to the city to be used for a variety of uses such as local schools, ECDC, and ECAP. It will hold four fundraisers per month and donate the proceeds to the city. Uh, they will be providing 20 to 30% discount to veterans and low-income patients. Uh, they will also be providing a venue for local artists to showcase their artwork in their facility without, uh, without charge to the artists. And they will institute a community social equity incubator program that would target underground and illegal operators who suffer from lack of capitalization and have war on drugs-related incarcerations. Uh, the applicant will be talking a little bit more in detail about these, uh, benefits. So in terms of the dispensary itself, uh, it's 5,000 square foot space in an existing building, which is about 63,000 square foot at 1475 Pelladue Street. The users, uh, will include onsite retail sale of cannabis products, onsite pickup, home delivery. Uh, they're expected to have 10 employees and three security personnel. Uh, they have 18 designated parking, designated parking spaces in the existing parking lot across the street. Uh, the hours of operation that the applicant has proposed is nine, uh, 9 to 10:00 PM, seven days a week for the dispensary, and 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM for delivery services. However, staff is recommending, uh, that, uh, the, the hours of operation be the same as those that were approved for Roshambo, uh, and therefore the condition of approval provides, uh, these, uh, in front of you. So this is their, uh, site plan, uh, just to kind of walk you through. So this is Pelladue Street. Broken Rack is located here. The entrance, so they, they'll be occupying a portion of this existing building. The entrance, the main entrance, will be off Pelladue. The parking, uh, that, that is being provided for this facility is, will occur here across the street. In terms of deliveries, uh, I'll, I'll take you to the next slide here. So this is the flow plan of the facility. So Pelladue is at the bottom here, and this is the main entrance. You enter in, there's a security check, then you enter inside the facility. This is onsite, uh, display of products. There is room for, uh, for, for cash and management purposes. There's a waiting room. The, the rooms that you see lined along here are basically consultation and therapy rooms. You may also see that there is a note regarding, uh, dispatch tables here. So the idea is that, uh, when the deliveries, uh, occur, they will be, uh, doing one or, the, the delivery folks will be coming once or twice, and the rest of the orders will be taken by the dispatchers here and communicated, uh, to the delivery. So it's in order to reduce back and forth to the site. Uh, and, and the red, uh, indicator that you see here, these are the cameras that will be, uh, put in there. In addition to this, uh, site, they also have access to this, uh, warehouse space, which they will share with the tenants. So the other, so this is occupied by what is called teronomic storage, uh, teronomic, uh, facility. So that is also operated by, uh, the same owner, or the same operator that is Mr. Seeming. Uh, so, so both these users will be using this warehouse space. Here is where the deliveries will occur. Uh, there is a roll-up door, and I'll show you a picture in a moment, and all deliveries will occur indoors. So this is for both. The product coming to the facility for sale, as well as delivery vehicles, which will be taking product from the facility to, uh, users, uh, in the neighborhood or in the city or in the larger area. Their, uh, their waste will also be indoors, and this is where the waste will be collected. So basically separation, uh, of users of the facility and, uh, the back of the house, uh, operations that need to occur. So this is the picture of the building. This is the front entrance. This is the picture of the facility inside. This is the warehouse space, and this is where the roll-up door is, and this is sort of the picture of the roll-up door that will occur. And this is the outside, the rear, along Horton Street, uh, where the roll-up door is and where the deliveries, uh, all the vehicular, uh, interaction will occur. So in terms of conformity with the planning regulations, this is in a mixed-use residential zone where cannabis retail is permitted. Uh, there is an overlay zone of transit hub, uh, which will determine, uh, which dictates that all parking requirements, uh, be reduced by half. Uh, there will be no change to, to the buildings. Uh, there's no, uh, floor-to-air ratio or the height, it's all the same. In terms of parking, the requirement calculates out to 3.5 to 5.8 spaces, and it's reduced because it's in the transit hub overlay zone. And they're proposing 18 designated space in the existing parking lot across the street. So what this means is that this proposal requires a use permit to allow, uh, parking spaces more than the maximum, as well as, uh, a use permit to allow parking off-site. And I'll talk a little bit more about it in a little bit. In terms of bicycle parking, the requirement, uh, comes out to one short-term bike space and one long-term. Uh, they are proposing to provide a 60 feet, uh, of bicycle racks that would accommodate approximately 60 spaces. And we have a condition of approval, uh, which states that, uh, whatever bicycle rack they, uh, uh, choose meet city standards. So there, there are three sets of, uh, use permit findings that you need to make in order to approve, uh, this project. The first that, uh, the first five is for the use itself. The, and that, and that use is cannabis retail as well as delivery. Uh, so in terms of the findings, we believe that they can be made. Uh, this is a new retail, uh, type of activity that will contribute to the economic diversity of the city, uh, which fulfills a number of goals and policies of the general plan, which have been outlined in detail in the staff report. It will use an existing vacant space, uh, with compatible surrounding users and will not pose a burden on existing utilities. And, and the project complies with applicable planning regulations, and the conditions of approval ensure, uh, that the bicycle requirements and the performance standards will be met. Uh, the second set of findings is for off-seat, off-site parking. Uh, they need to demonstrate that it is physically impossible to provide the required parking on the same lot, uh, as where the use is going to take place, and, uh, and that the parking arrangement that will be approved is in place at all times during the operation of the use to be served by parking. The building is lot-lined building, so it's, it is pretty obvious that it's physically impossible. Uh, there is a condition of approval which requires submission of a lease or a similar legal document that ties the use at 50, at the Pelladue Street with provision of the 18 designated parking spots across the street. Uh, the second, the third set of findings that need to be, uh, made, uh, is to allow more parking than maximum that is permitted. Uh, so the applicant needs to demonstrate that additional parking is required, uh, and that the provision of additional parking will not result in an over-dependence on autos and will not adversely affect transit, bicycle, and pedestrian access to the site and other adjacent uses. As there are limited number of cannabis retail storefronts open to all in the area, uh, the proposed project is likely to become a destination facility, uh, that will serve the greater region, and is therefore is likely that there are more customers that will arrive by car. Also, uh, other cannabis retail, existing retail storefronts in the area, such as the Berkeley Patients Group in Berkeley on San Pablo and Harbor Side in Oakland, they also have similar parking, uh, they also provide the same kind of parking for this space that they have. Uh, also the parking is being provided in an existing parking lot, so there will be no new curb cuts that will be proposed and that which would typically, uh, adversely impact pedestrian and bicycle access. So the configuration of the streets will remain, uh, the same. Uh, in terms of conditions of approval, I'd like to highlight a few things. Uh, one is the community benefits. So, uh, as with Roshambo, the whole extent of the community benefits that you've heard today, uh, heard from me and you've heard in greater detail from the applicant, majority of them will be captured in the operating permit that will be issued by the police department and which is renewed annually. Uh, the only benefits that are captured by the use permit are the ones that have some kind of a land use, uh, application. So for example, the local artist display is related to the space, uh, that they have. So the condition says, we have a condition which says that they will display, uh, the local artists in their, uh, facility, and that they are allowed to hold fundraisers in that facility. Uh, other conditions include making sure that there's adequate parking signage, so the, the customers who come to the facility know where they need to park, and that they provide information to their customers as, on the website or, uh, other forms, so that there's no confusion in terms of where parking needs to occur. Uh, at this time, uh, there's a condition which says no onsite smoking or vaping permitted. Uh, just as an FYI, uh, the applicant in, in their RFP proposal also included, uh, that the, they will be having a onsite, uh, consumption lounge. That is not being proposed at this time. Uh, they want to start, uh, doing the first, the major, um, function, and then it will come back to you, uh, for the use permit amendment at the time when they are ready to have a lounge. Uh, but at that, at this time, we are including the condition that there will be no smoking or vaping permitted, or, or any consumption for that matter. Uh, the applicant did, uh, hold a community meeting on April 12th, uh, and it was held onsite. About eight individuals were present in addition to the applicant team, and, uh, I was present as well as the economic development, uh, manager, Chad Smalley, was also present. Uh, there were mainly, uh, questions and mainly questions related to clarifications of the operation, and, uh, one, there was one comment made regarding, uh, shortage of parking in the general area. Uh, this went to the, uh, DCC, that's the staff meeting, uh, that we do internally to review all projects, uh, in April as well. Uh, no, uh, no major, uh, issues were identified at that time. So that concludes my presentation. We are approving, uh, we are recommending approval, uh, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. The, as I indicated before, the applicant does have a presentation, uh, and I'm available for questions now or later.
I do have a quick question. Um, the 250-foot distance, uh, from the greenway, that seemed like a condition, but there, there wasn't a scale on the maps, and I wasn't sure if it was still meeting that requirement of being 250 feet away.
Yes, yes.
Okay. It was just hard to tell.
I had the same question. Thank you.
Any other questions for Maru? Maru, I do have a question, actually. Can you flip back to the floor plan? So where you were pointing where the, um, roll-up door is, it says that there's six inside parking spaces, but they look like they're right in front of the roll-up door. Are those actually parking spaces in there?
So it's, it's, well, parking spaces might be sort of a misnomer, but you go in the entire, you basically drive in.
So those are spaces for the loading?
For the deliveries only. So if you're delivering, uh, whether, whether you're, whether you're there to, um, you know, unload the, the product or to pick up product, they, it's anticipated they will drive in, and that's where it will occur.
I see. So are those, um, spaces also available for the other tenants that share that delivery space or that warehouse space?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, one other question. Where are the bike racks going to be located?
I'm gonna let the applicant answer that, uh, as to where they plan to do.
We'll have him answer that after his presentation. Okay. Um, can the applicant come up for the presentation, please?
Just go into slideshow, maybe? At the top?
Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay. Good evening, commissioners and staff. Thank you so much for the opportunity to stand before you and present our fantastic operation. Um, unfortunately, I don't have any samples for you tonight, as was the case with the lighting company. However, I hope that, I hope that, uh, my presentation entices you with regards to what we're trying to accomplish and give back to the community. So East Bay Therapeutics, as you can see in the slide, is based on the premise of not cannabis as a head high, but cannabis as a solution to variation of different scenarios than, and remedies that folks may be seeking. In that context, we essentially base all of our operation on mostly the medicinal aspects of the product, uh, but also we do cater to the adult use since now that is part of the state, uh, law, and in that context, we would like to capture as much tax revenue for Emeryville as possible. Just in the way of background, um, I have about 20 years of high-tech, uh, experience. I worked for a couple of governors. So technology is really, uh, my first love, so to speak. Uh, cannabis, on the other hand, is my son, Dariusch, who's in the audience, is, uh, his birth child, and the terminology ohana in Hawaiian, it means family. So this is predominantly a family business. Together, we essentially are bringing that entire operation into city of Emeryville. We have operations that are vertically integrated, and what that means is that we have fairly high-tech cannabis, uh, enterprises up in Northern California from genetics all the way through cultivation, manufacturing, and retail. We have that, those establishments set up in Sacramento and Southern California, and we would very much like to make Emeryville our home in the Bay Area. I went to Washington High School in San Francisco, so Bay Area is sort of where I grew up, and would like to set up home in, in the city. In fact, I now am a resident of Emeryville, so to speak, and I do, uh, soon I'll be living in the, uh, plaza that was subject to the conversation earlier. Just to give you a little overview, this is what I'm going to present to you for the next few minutes. We'll be covering the proposed operation. The local team will talk a little bit about that, and, uh, also cover the site plan and the proposed, uh, floor plan that you saw. And we'll get into a little bit of the neighborhood development in the context of the city walk that, uh, Maru talked about. And then, uh, we'll also talk about what's really important to our operation, and that's safety and security of, uh, the public and essentially, uh, the overall operation that we're planning to deploy. And then my, my partner, Rob Fung, will cover the community aspects of the situation so that you can get a better feel for what we're bringing into the city. In the context of what we're proposing for the storefront operation, it will predominantly cater to the local market. So in... So in that case, we'll be targeting our advertising scenario to the hotels, to the tourists and the residents and the offices that are surrounding our, our proposed facility. We'll also establish a design format that very much looks like a Apple Store design. And the reason we do that is we believe in education before purchase. We are going to set up an Apple Store format with iPads and all the capabilities that provides significant amount of insight and education about the products before an actually is, uh, before a sale is actually made. In addition to that, we're going to have therapeutic experts onsite that can consult with interested folks that, about the various remedies that in particular the CBD products, I'm not sure how much you know about the variation of products in cannabis, there's the THC that gives you the psychoactive element, then there is the CBD that has all the medicinal remedies that are talked about quite a bit and that aspect of the industry is really taking the marketplace by the storm. So we're gonna put a lot of emphasis on that, have consultants onsite that can, uh, privately or in an open setting, uh, under an educational format, provide as much information as possible about what cannabis can do in order to tackle various, uh, aspects of the situations they may have. We're also gonna have group sessions for yoga and meditation. In particular, we're gonna offer lunch hour sessions to folks that work in that area to come and hang out with us and, uh, get some meditation practices. On the delivery side, this is basically the landscape of what we're gonna cover. Roughly about, uh, sixty-nine hundred square miles in Bay Area will be our target and about seven point seven million population that makes up the sixty-nine hundred square miles. The way we plan to accomplish that, because technologies sort of are fundamental element, we're going to develop, uh, a program that is already in play and proven up and down the state, which is sort of an Amazon and Uber crossover. We don't use the hub and spoke or pizza delivery model where you come up, pick up pizza, deliver it, come back, pick up some more and deliver it. What we do because of State of California allowing us to carry inventory onboard, what we do is basically, uh, we purchase corporate cars for once so that they're brand-new cars, not subjected to breakdowns and such, and we retrofit every corporate car with three-hundred sixty-degree security cameras inside the vehicle and outside the vehicle so that there is absolute surveillance of all the transactions. And then those corporate cars will be loaded up with products on a daily basis and they take off and chances of them coming back because they have onboard products is zero to none. There may be the, the situations where they run out of particular inventory and they would have to come back and reload, but those scenarios are far and few in between based on past practices. All of our drivers will be industry-trained, so it'll be sort of cannabis consultants, but they will also be trained in security matters, so they'll know how to proactively deal with different situations if they arise. The way that we do our dispatch, at dispatch time, we essentially make our customers aware of our security practice so that they are aware that the, all of the transactions are going, gonna be recorded practically the same as an indispensable experience. We, our drivers will carry a case that has a representation of different products that we offer on the menu and, uh, in that particular predicament, they'll be able to have consultation with the customers and let them know what the various products can do, but also make them aware that every transaction that we engage in is recorded by a, a security camera streaming directly into our backend, uh, office at the location that we talked about. This is the range of, uh, team expertise that we're gonna bring into Emeryville. So I have a very strong business, finance, technology and compliance background. You know, I've developed software companies, sold software products, sold software companies. My partner, Rob Fung, who is, uh, is the former attorney, city council member in city of Sacramento, so we basically have the overall element covered in the context of politics, community sensitivity, business, finance, technology. My son, Dariush, is gonna be in charge of the storefront operations and the management aspect. And then the rest of the team will essentially handle the remaining functions that are before you. We are targeting, uh, the, the presentation Miru gave you said roughly about ten. Those would be sort of permanent employees. We're expecting some consultants, roughly in the neighborhood of five to start with us. However, we do expect to scale as time goes on, whether it has to do with onsite consumption of some, some variations of it. In particular, on the delivery side, we expect to expand significantly and the way that we establish our, our delivery model is that we buy a vehicle, we retrofit it with all the capabilities, we assign it to a particular territory. And we've developed that model so well, we can essentially launch another vehicle and capture another territory within a week to ten days. So that, that is the fundamental aspects of our incubator program and my partner will talk about that. Just very briefly, the incubator program will entice local folks that may be contemplating illegal cannabis operations. We entice them to come into our operation. We give them funding, vehicle and all the scenarios that are necessary for them to become legitimate entrepreneurs and go capture opportunity rather than standing on street corner and selling untested and harmful products to folks. This is a way to legalize, get them responsible, uh, a responsible operation, help them get a permit and make them, uh, responsible entrepreneurs to pay taxes and such. As far as the proposed, uh, site is concerned, um, Miru covered that. Uh, we are basically targeting a very high-traffic location, uh, practically a quick walk over the Powell Street Bridge, uh, from the hotels. There's like four major hotels hovering that area, major shopping centers just on the other side, lots of offices and lots of residences, multi, uh, resident housing all around the place. We do have roughly about seventy-six parking spaces right in the immediate vicinity, but there are also, under the Powell Street Bridge, there's roughly about twenty-four parking spaces that seem to be available to public. We are in a transit hub overlay, as was mentioned, and we are ideal for foot traffic and I'll explain to you how we're going to essentially, uh, improve upon that particular vision. We do meet all the buffer zones and in fact, we are, I believe, in excess of two hundred fifty in the context of, uh, the city requirements. So as was mentioned, the thirty thousand square foot facility is, uh, entirely leased by our overall operation, but we are dedicating five thousand square foot of that to cannabis. A portion of the remaining space would be dedicated to software development. I do have a software development company that is in operation, so we're gonna bring that and make Emeryville its home. The focus of that software development will be drone, essentially, so what we'll do is develop software solutions for passenger drones, for traffic management, for surveillance, a range of different government and consumer functionality will all be developed at that The space that is dedicated for cannabis is, uh, very nicely designed for our purposes, so we're not proposing any major tenant improvements. It does need some upgraded flooring and fixtures and lights so that it presents itself well in the context of the Apple Store format that I explained. At some point, we will come before you as we test out the, uh, good neighbor scenario and make sure that the community is ready for onsite consumption. Uh, at this point, we don't really have a good sense. We do get, you know, a, a clear message that there is preference to have onsite consumption, but we wanna be very careful in that regard and make sure that the, the community and the neighborhood as a whole, uh, are prepared for that and will gradually transition into that. What we do wanna focus on is the storefront and the, the delivery aspect and really capture that element in the context of the tax revenue that we can bring to the city and all the related benefits to the community. At this point, we are proposing nine AM to ten PM operations. Delivery would be cut off at seven PM as required, but we are open to expanding our hours to service additional needs as, uh, as the situation arises. As for our neighborhood development, we do fall in the Shellmount District, which is, uh, targeted for walkable destinations. So as a matter of our contribution to the city, how many of you know the Powell Street Bridge and what condition it's in?
I think all of you.
I sort of captured, I captured the, the element with a few pictures and made sure the train doesn't run me over on that first picture. So we are proposing to, uh, not do major developments of that bridge so that it doesn't become a massive project that takes forever. We're just proposing some basic improvements of painting that bridge, bring some local artists, put their creative talent to work, make it look good, install some solar-powered lighting so that at night, that bridge is well illuminated. And, uh, we're, we're also proposing to develop the underbridge. We would like to fund and conduct some fundraising events to really dress up that under, uh, Powell Street Bridge and we would like to call that entire element the city walk. Would like to spend some money to repave that parking lot once we figure out who owns it and, and, uh, and eventually turn that entire scenario into a place where we can do, um, art festivals and art events, uh, for, uh, creative art, sculpture, performing arts, basically the, the art scenarios that the city loves and would like to see. That particular area is, uh, you know, i- is sort of a scary sight at night, you know? I, I went around and spoke with Dr. Paymani, who's a Emeryville chiropractor, met with a couple of other folks in that particular area and the common theme for that particular corridor is that that situation needs to be remedied. We would like to take ownership of that revamping that area and making it not only look nice, but also really powered up with some serious lighting so that folks can feel comfortable going across from Hyatt Hotel, Four Points to the other side and vice versa in terms of improving, uh, that the cross, uh, railroad track commerce and such. The question about sixty-foot bicycle rack, at this point, and I haven't spoken to, to the landlord, who I see in the, in the back of the room, um, we would like to place that bicycle rack in conjunction with, uh, Marilyn, who's also in the broken rack, uh, right along the side of, uh, uh, the parking spaces that are dedicated to us. So, and I'll show you on the site map exactly what I'm talking about. So basically, we would like the, the bicycle racks to be somewhere that is useful and can be accessed relatively easy, uh, by the folks that wanna bike to our facility. As I mentioned, uh, safety and security are near and dear to us, so the, the, uh, the site plan, the floor plan that I'm gonna show you, I'll identify where all the security cameras are gonna be within the facility. Uh, outside the facility, there, there's going to be, uh, all kinds of cameras as well. All the cameras will be, uh, high-tech, four K, uh, resolution and they will all have facial recognition and license plate on the exterior side and on the inside, they will all have facial recognition. So we'll be able to basically capture, uh, whoever comes in and out of the facility for any potential, uh, security or police situation that may arise. We, we are going to hire three full-time onsite security officers. Now, the security officers are going to be former police lieutenants. We already have three targeted and they are ready to go. The reason we're targeting former police lieutenants is because they are professionally trained to remedy a situation, but also we would like to remove the burden of any potential situations from, uh, uh, that may be placed upon the city police. We would like to be the first order of, uh, scenario to stop any predicament and then if need be, we'll engage the city police to take the situation further. We are going to propose, uh, those, uh, security poles that are solar-powered and we would like to place them upon the Powell Street Bridge. And what that is, is in addition to, uh, uh, one thing I forgot to mention is that one of our security, uh, officers that's on duty will be required to patrol the Powell Street Bridge, the city walk, so that folks that wanna come across the Powell Street Bridge have a sense of comfort and safety and security to go across, whether it's daylight or in the evening or at night. In addition to having a security officer patrol that, we would like to install those emergency poles that are solar-powered also, so it doesn't require any wiring and such. And how that operates is that there's a, I'm not sure if you've seen them in city Oakland, there's a blue light that illuminates them very nicely, so they're very visible and they also have a panic button on them. So if any situation happens and the, the, uh, folks that are utilizing the city walk come into a particular predicament, all they gotta do is push that button that immediately dispatches our security first and foremost and if need be, we'll be, um, dispatching the local police to accommodate the situation. In addition to, uh, three full-time security officers onsite, we're, we're going to hire a security patrol that would monitor that entire corridor from Horton to Hollis and then from Powell to Stanford. So we'll be able to monitor all the activities, not only for our facility, but also for Broken Rack, Honor Bar and fourteen seventy-five Powell, which basically make up that entire corridor. In addition to all the security features that I mentioned, our security officers will monitor the area and make sure that there is no loitering like graffiti or folks throwing garbage on the street because we have absolute zero, zero tolerance for that situation. This point, I'd like to ask my partner, Rob, to come up and discuss community.
Good evening, commissioners, staff. Rob Fung, I'm, uh, happy to be here and I, and I do wanna say, on behalf of, uh, East Bay Therapeutics, we're literally thrilled to be here in, in Emeryville. It's, um, very exciting for us and I, you know, we're, we're based in Sacramento, but Nasser said that this will be our flagship and, and truly it will be our flagship. I was, uh, telling folks that we've been meeting with, um, for those of us who are from Sacramento, I mean, to me, Emeryville is like the coolest part of the Bay Area, frankly. Um, it's on the right side of the bridge, um, and it's, um, it's just, I know, it's, it's just so clean and, uh, it's techie, but it's, you guys are very progressive and it's just an amazing, uh, community you have and, and we're thrilled to, to come and be part of it. So, so thank you for that. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll go through this, I know you guys have been sitting here a while and I remember sitting, sitting in, in meetings a long time. And so, anyway, um, really, uh, first of all, I just wanna say, um, there were a couple things that were not exactly right in a couple of slides, so I wanna correct the record. We're not necessarily gonna have fundraisers every week or for a month, but what, what that really meant was is there's two aspects to the fundraisers. We're gonna certainly be involved creating fundraisers for community need events, but we're also gonna make our, our big space in the back of the building available to other folks in the community who might wanna have a, some sort of community space for use, not just for art incubation or, or showing art, but if folks, you know, would like to do a fundraiser or have some sort of event, we, we have a space for them and, and we'll certainly make that available at our cost, right? So that's the first thing. The second thing is, uh, is sort of under the heading of spell check isn't necessarily foolproof. Um, I know Nasser was talking about a slide where having like a group yoga and medication at lunchtime, it's supposed to be meditation. So, you know, it, it could grow if we go to onsite, but, uh, really the, that wasn't the, uh, I, I think the idea is, is meditation. So, anyway, I wanted to kind of clear that up. I know the slide said medication, so I just wanted to, to make sure that we were all reading and hearing the same thing. So, um, so the other thing is, um, you all mentioned in some of the earlier presentations that, um, you would appreciate, and I get this, continuing to meet with the community after we have an approval and that's what we intend to do. We're gonna have quarterly community meetings, um, with the greater community around our facility for a couple of reasons. We wanna know how it's going for them, what are their impacts, you know, now that we're out in the wild and, and kind of in practice. We also wanna know if there's things, uh, we can be doing better or if things we're doing well. So we, we really intend to be very engaged with the community. Talked about the monthly art and fundraising events, onsite artist incubation and sales. One of the things we've already learned, kind of, after kind of being out here for a while is that Emeryville, um, is very, very, um, dedicated to the arts, um, which I think is, um, you know, I, I think any city that has a high cultural IQ has a great community. I think that's part of the social fabric, so we wanna, uh, promote that. You've heard a lot about the, the art stuff we wanna do. Certainly, we also wanna make our walls available on the inside if, if local artists are looking for a place to kind of, uh, showcase their, their work, um, for sale or otherwise. We're gonna be making monthly community contributions. Uh, one percent of gross revenue of our revenues will go to, um, frankly, whatever the city wants to direct it to. We're, we're happy to, to, to make that available. We're also going to, um, require that our staff donate at a minimum one percent of their time, uh, as a volunteer in the community. And then, um, it's not quite up here, but, um, one of the things that's my specific And then, it's not quite up here, but one of the things that's my specific responsibility is to be in charge of the Ohana Community Foundation. So that's a separate organization, and we'll be funding that separately, apart from what you see up there. And so we'll have a community foundation that will also be a source of potential grant funding for special projects in the community. And equally as important, we want to make sure that we're creating programming about being responsible with cannabis. So, you know, like a lot of things, it's not appropriate for young people, and we want to create venues where we're giving that message, where it's, you know, something that you should only think about as an adult. We want to make sure that people understand the medical applications clearly, so we're going to develop some education around that. And then lastly, we want to make sure that we're being responsible about how you could use it recreationally, right? So, that's also going to be a feature of the foundation. And so, you know, my main responsibility is to kind of be the person who's the community liaison, and I'm really looking forward to that. Also, you know, meeting some of our neighbors, I see Marilyn's here, and she brought some amazing food to our community meeting, and I think the eight people that were there didn't want to leave, frankly, because there was so much food and it was so amazing. And so we're really excited about, like I said, being here in the city of Emeryville. We want to be real responsible and take our time about kind of understanding your community, but we are very committed to doing that, and we are going to be consistently meeting with folks, either on a regular basis or an ad hoc basis, and want to be very much involved in your city. So, thank you very much.
You can move on to the next slide.
Oh, there's another slide? I don't, did you just push a button?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. There we go. Oh, okay. Thank you. So I've talked about the nonprofit foundation, community outreach and education, and then there's the incubator for the disadvantaged. So, the incubator model is, I'll tell you what it's not first. It's not a training program, it's not an apprenticeship. It really is, and we've, to back up a little bit, when I was still on the council in Sacramento, I was part of the council that created our medical cannabis ordinance where we have had dispensaries and stuff like that. And so now that the world has gone recreational and there are businesses being licensed, one of the things that I think every city struggles with, who is allowing this, is now that you've got businesses that are out, you know, as part of your tax base, doing what you want them to do, being regulated, how do you sort of protect them and the public from unregulated businesses, unregulated products, sort of the enforcement side? And one of the things that we think is really important is having this social equity program for the disadvantaged. And what it sort of looks like is, is providing a carrot to people who are already in the industry, who've got the experience and probably customer base, if you will, or product base, and give them the ability to come in to incubate with us at no cost to them. So we will give them the infrastructure, the business know-how, the lawyering, the lobbying. There's a true-up after there's, you know, revenue that's brought in, but that's the only way they would ever have to pay back costs. And after a year, if they want to go out on their own, then we would support that, if that makes sense. But it's really a carrot approach to enforcement, is the way I look at it. It's also, I think, a good way for us to recruit folks from disadvantaged communities who have really good skill sets for this new legal business. And then sponsoring safe access to cannabis, that was really, like I said, sort of the programming around the foundation, and really, the more product that is going through legal channels means that the products that will be available to your constituents will have been tested, right? Will have been tested, and, you know, we can look at them as being safer. So, anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Questions? Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions for them?
I do actually just have an operational question. I know that you have to go through an operations round, but the parking that you are using and the timing of the, have you considered further the timing of the nighttime businesses, the Honor Bar and the Broken Rack? And, because it doesn't seem like you close like a regular business hours, you have nighttime hours as well, right?
We do, yes.
Okay. And do you think there'll be conflicts around that? Have you looked at that?
Well, there's a possibility of that, but at 1475 Powell Street, there is a 26-space facility that we do plan to negotiate some arrangements with the landlord with regards to that. That's practically empty at night, albeit at Broken Rack and Honor Bar, the parking lot right there gets full. So there might be some competition as it relates to that parking space. And then the Powell Street Bridge underpass, that has roughly about 24 spaces, that's virtually unused at night, between the hours of, like, right around, I've been monitoring it because of the improvements we want to make to that area. Roughly around 4:00 PM, 4:00 to 5:00 PM, the place completely empties out. So we expect to not only contribute to develop it, but of course, get some access to the use of that area for our purposes as well.
Commissioner King?
This might be a question for Maru or Mr. Azimi, so let's just try it out.
Shot at it.
For the yoga sessions that you're offering, is there some kind of, is there a separate permit or license that's needed from the city or from the state to do that?
I'm, that's a Maru question. I'll let her start.
So, this would be accessory to the principal use?
Okay.
So it would not need any kind of a separate permit from us? And in terms of any other permits, I'm not aware of that, whether, you know, whether anything is needed for from the state.
Okay. Maru, are you aware of what makes it accessory?
It's aside, it's not the principal use. The principal use at the facility is the sale of cannabis, and be it in person or delivery. That is, we consider that to be the principal use. And what he is suggesting, that, you know, he might have yoga classes or yoga sessions, we would consider that use as accessory to the principal use and not a separate use.
So, Mr. Azimi, thank you, Maru. You're not intending to have the yoga sessions, there be commercial transaction for yoga sessions?
No, absolutely not.
And just to clarify, are you intending to do the yoga sessions only within that warehouse space, or is it actually going to be inside of the facility?
There is a space within the facility, if I can show you real quick. So if this area right here is a fairly sizable room, we expect to conduct it right in that particular area.
Great, thank you.
Yes, can we go back to the image that Maru had in her presentation about the back gate?
Isn't it?
Yes, yes. It's a, it's a image, it looks like it may be from Google.
You wanted the roll-up door?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you want to see the door, the picture?
The picture, please.
Yeah.
From the outside? There we go. Thank you, Maru. So this is a bike boulevard, and I know that you're intending on parking the delivery cars inside, so that was great to see. At any point, do you imagine cars that are loading for your business parking in that space there?
Oh, we do not.
Okay, so the time that they go into the garage will be very brief, and there won't be any, okay, great.
That's correct. It'll generally be around 7:30 PM. We shut down delivery operation at 7:00, 7:30, they pull in to perform the ending transactions for the day.
Thank you. Let's see. Ah, the corporate cars. Are those branded with the company logo, or are they unbranded? I'm curious, because of many reasons.
As in Domino's Pizza?
Yeah.
Absolutely not. Advertising in that fashion is actually prohibited by state law, so, and we do not want to be a target in the context of onboard inventory or other scenarios, for sure.
Those are my questions for now, thank you.
You bet.
Looking at the same image, what I'd like to suggest, I'm not going to request a condition of approval, but where I, Miguel and I are both the bicyclists, well, even Chris, a lot of us bike here. My concern is because there's not a lot of easement, and the minute your door rolls up, the car front end pulls out before they can actually see the sidewalk or anyone walking on it. So what I'd like to suggest is that if you can have a staff member who's not in a car, escort the car out. Coming isn't as important because you can't see as you can, but coming out, it's pretty blind until the driver's window is out, and by that point, they're on the sidewalk. So if the, if when you're shipping things out, if the door could open and a staff person could be out there to make sure that the way is clear, and then they could escort the cars out, that would be really appreciated.
Absolutely. So just to comment on that, the delivery folks leaving is roughly around early in the morning, for one, but we are going to install, I don't know if you see them in these public parking, when a car is coming out?
Oh, we have the sign.
The siren goes off.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So that is what we're going to install to accommodate that.
The thing about, just, that's great and stuff, but this is near the train station, and it's a lot of businesses, so you're going to have morning commuters. So even though you're early in the morning, it's still, it's still a potential, but I think those are great. Then I have a couple of questions on the officers. So you mentioned that there's going to be three security officers. Is that your total staff, or are that three securities officers on duty at one time?
Three on duty at one time.
Wow, okay.
So one will be inside, monitoring activities within, one will be checking customers in as they walk into the entrance, and one would be patrolling.
Wow.
And they'll rotate at any point, so we're not going to stick one security officer with the controlling.
With boring job.
Yeah, exactly.
A lieutenant's not going to be very happy sitting checking the clients, that's for sure. And then the security call stations you're talking about on the Powell Street Bridge, who will that alarm go to when they press the panic button? Does it go to East Bay Therapeutics?
Our security first.
So it goes to your security, not, not, Emeryville PD?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, so it goes to your security people.
So we'll be the first...
Responders, so to speak.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Very good, that's all my questions for now, thank you.
You bet.
I have a question. So is the CityWalk part of the operator's permit, Maru, do you know? That, the portion of improving the area under the bridge, is that part of the operator's permit, when that gets reviewed?
Yes.
Because it's not part of this specific site?
Correct, correct. So whatever you don't see in the conditions of approval that you heard today, and it's included in the staff report, will be captured in the operating permit conditions.
Got it.
And staff has already started working on those.
Okay. And one question for the applicant. So for the people who participate in the incubator, does EBT actually employ them? Are they your employees when they participate in the incubator?
Great question. We generally give them a choice of either becoming an employee, going on our W-2 payroll, or they can be independent contractor and evolve into their own entrepreneurial experience.
Okay, very interesting. Thank you. If there are no other questions from the commission, then I will open up the public hearing for comments. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please approach the microphone. Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name's Kimberly Cargile. I am one of the partners in East Bay Therapeutics. I am the person who has the storefront experience, has been operating a model dispensary in Sacramento for the last 10 years. We've been very involved in the passage of all the regulations on the state level and worked very closely with the regulators to help craft the regulations. And I just wanted to thank you so much for the equity permit that was awarded to our company. Being a woman, a woman in business, a woman business owner, equity is very important to me and to my partner, Ron, and to the rest of our team. And so we just want to thank you for all the hard work that's gone into this, and thank you for everything you do. We look forward to doing business here.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ron Leggett. I'm one of the equity partners as well at East Bay Therapeutics. I represent the community benefits package as well. I'm just here to thank you guys as well, and I hope that you vote to pass this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak tonight? Okay, seeing no more, I will close the public hearing for comments and open it up to Commissioner deliberation. Commissioner Thompson, any comments?
Um, no.
Commissioner King?
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for doing the vetting on this prior, so it's looking great. I particularly want to thank the applicant for doing a lot of things that are just really innovative and putting yourself out in the community. As, doing the legwork to get onto the community, to meet with them, to open yourself up to the community, to be a neighbor and a participant in the community, it should be encouraged. I think that sets great precedence for what can be done. You're doing a lot of great things to activate a part of the city that's been long been neglected or just papered over. So really eager to see and excited to see what you do with that. And also, I think it's really laudable that you're trying a very, let's say, innovative business model to try to bring folks who are participants in the underground economy above ground. That's going to, I think, get a lot of attention, one way or the other. Hopefully, it's because of all the success that you're going to enjoy from that, but it's going to be, to pioneer that, I think, takes guts, it takes courage, it takes an innovative approach. So I'll be very excited, and I'll be keeping a close eye as to how that turns out as well. But overall, like what I see, and welcome to Emeryville.
Thank you. Commissioner Gero, would you like to go next?
So I too would echo that. The values of social equity and community are really close to my heart, and so I enjoyed seeing that piece of your presentation and seeing that's a really important piece of your model. And so echoing that, the improvements to the Powell Street Bridge are well-needed. I think that the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee would be very interested in that because it doesn't feel as safe as some other crossovers. The lighting improvements will help with that. I also enjoy the idea of the art space underneath the Powell Street Bridge, to really activate that space. I think that we've seen some other improvements on the other side of the bridge, and I'd like to see that replicated on the east side. I'm really excited about having this business here in our community, and would love to see us move to approve this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller?
Again, I'd like to thank you for your very, very thorough presentation. I think staff did a great job of addressing the things we need to consider, as they always do, and I think you guys did a great job. First of all, I just, the way I began looking at this, because this is a new model for us of this type of business, so when I look at cannabis retailers, I kind of put it in the same category as a liquor store. It's kind of the same thing. And I would love to see a liquor store do one quarter of what you're required to do at this point in time. I'd like to see black and white liquors on San Pablo and Fort Worth Street, just do a quarter of these things to kind of clean, just patrol and clean up the neighborhood. That would be a good start. So I think you guys are really going above and beyond, and I think both of the dispensaries that we're approving have done that, and I really do appreciate that. I think what you're doing in the Powell Street Bridge area alone is amazing and should allow you just to slide right into home base. I think it's, I really, really do appreciate, and I'm really excited. I crossed both those bridges, living at Pacific Park Plaza, and I really despise the Amtrak Bridge, where it's round and round, has blind corners, you run into people, so I really prefer to use Powell Street, but it's not a very safe feeling bridge. It just doesn't feel very comfortable, and this, the experience of being under there, it's just kind of dirty. And so I'm really looking forward to all the, and the art center, you know, let's block it off, let's, you know, I could see booths there for a Saturday and just really having a fun event there. And I think that would liven up a space that really is always looked at as kind of like where the troll lives, you know? So I think it's really cool. And your incubator program is very, very timely. I just finished reading an article in San Francisco Business Times about the marijuana industry and how a lot of the people are going to stay in the black market just because of the fees and the cost it costs to get into the business. So I think you guys are providing, in an incubator program, to become independent contractors or join your team is really going to help do that, certainly not going to fix the whole problem. There will always be a black market, I think, just because it's easy. But I think everything, and I think law enforcement is going to be very difficult to stop that. So I think providing opportunities that look better than that. And I don't think people really want to live a criminal lifestyle. They do it because it's what is easy and what they need to do. So I really laud you for that in itself as well. So I think it's really good, and it's going to be a really different business. We don't know what this is like, you know, we've had the medical marijuana for years, but now we're kind of opening up to everybody. So it's going to be, and I'm glad you're wanting to do the onsite consumption later. You know, let's see how this feels, let's see how this works, and move then. So I appreciate the steps you guys are taking in how it's going, so really good. I'm very much in support.
Thanks.
I'll just have one quick comment was, in general, in terms of just urban activation, you know, I appreciate from...
you know, I appreciate from both a business perspective of occupying and reoccupying and having a thoughtful model, as well as then extrapolating and extending that into the community. And so I think it really just echoes the comments that you've already heard, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yeah, so your neighborhood development and community involvement proposals are super robust and they are very impressive. You know, and I also appreciate your innovative business model. You know, I think that what you are proposing to bring to the community sounds great and very exciting and, you know, I guess I'm particularly excited about the activation under the bridge because I bike through there all the time. And to, you know, to have art in a location like that really does a lot to it, you know, on Shell Mound, there's a big splash of paint on one of the posts on the freeway and I drive by that all the time and I think, oh, this is great. I love looking at that. And if we can have something, you know, under the control area of the bridge, I think it would be a really great improvement. So I really appreciate all of the effort that you put into this. It really sounds like you guys are beyond prepared for this and, you know, I look forward to welcoming you to Emeryville. So with that said, do we, does anybody have a motion to?
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve with the added conditions of approval that the staff has put in for the hours, in particular, changing the hours and that. So yeah, I would make a motion for that.
I think those were included, right? Those can.
Nothing needs to be included, the conditions that I.
Oh, okay, those are included.
Are already in there.
Okay, perfect. And I would motion that we approve as suggested.
I would second that motion.
All right. To approve the application as presented by staff, Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Commissioner Kang?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barrera?
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days. Welcome.
Okay.
Ms. Cargile, please take care in opening your car door.
Thank you very much and welcome to Emeryville. So the next item is planning Commissioner comments. Do we have any comments from the commission?
I don't.
None? All right, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff.
Thanks, workmen.